Good afternoon. I'm going to call the March 27, 2012 City Council Meeting to order. Will you please rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll. Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hodgkiss.
Here.
House.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Any changes to the agenda?
No, there's not, Madam Mayor. I did want to note, though, that we did not have a Finance Committee meeting today. We had to cancel that because Mistress Mario was ill, and so we'll be rescheduling that in two weeks.
Okay, so we won't have a report from the Finance Committee because there wasn't one. Great. Public comment. I have a couple of speaker slips up here and two minutes up at the podium, so we'll start with Kenneth Locke and continue with Tom Becker. Is Kenneth not here? We'll see if he comes back in. Mr. Becker? And we'll follow with Woody Jackson. Good afternoon.
Yeah, thank you, Tom Becker. Over the last several months, the Santa Barbara Police Department has been conducting crosswalk sting operations on Milpa Street and other locations throughout the city. The sting operation consists of a decoy pedestrian stepping into a crosswalk while vehicles are approaching the intersection. If the motorist fails to stop for the pedestrian, a citation is issued by one of a half dozen police officers hiding behind a tree or a building. SBPD procedures cause for the decoy to wait until there are no vehicles within 200 feet of the crosswalk before stepping out into traffic lanes. However, on March 22, I observed a sting operation at the intersection of Milpa and Yanana Alley. The two decoys working the sting were stepping into traffic with cars as close as 50 feet from the crosswalk. I video recorded this activity and will provide a copy to the City Council for review. One of the ideas to improve pedestrian safety on Milpa Street is the installation of a warning light system that will alert motorists to the presence of pedestrians in crosswalks. SBPD does not set up any kind of warning system for motorists during their sting operations. A temporary warning system that can be set up that will simulate the type of warning system being asked for by many on the east side, SBPD just won't do it. According to an SBPD spokesman, the purpose of the crosswalk sting is to issue as many citations as possible. Giving motorists a heads-up that a pedestrian is crossing the street will reduce the number of motorists receiving citations, defeating the purpose of the crosswalk sting. I will provide a copy of my video recordings as soon as I have it transferred from my cellphone to a flash drive. Thank you.
Woody Jackson, and then I see Kenneth Locke has come back, so you'll be next.
Thank you. My name is Woody Jackson, and I'm the resident of Santa Barbara. I would like to ask the question to City of Santa Barbara Council, why in the world did the city decline the receiving of Montecito Hot Springs? This cultural and historical jewel is found within Hot Springs Canyon. The boundaries of the now newly acquired springs share property lines with the city-owned Gould Park. Land Trust for Santa Barbara County seeks to find the steward that will love, respect, and honor the history of these springs. For 47 years, the community has awaited the next chapter to be written regarding Montecito Hot Springs, once known as Santa Barbara Hot Sulphur Springs property. This cultural and historical resource has 10,000 years of human interaction for therapeutic or medicinal remedy and pleasurable enjoyment. I would like to ask the City Council to thoroughly explore why we are willing to lose local control and a vital part of Santa Barbara's mineral waters heritage and legacy. The mineral-drinking fountains of Potter Hotel. Veronica medicinal springs bottled and shipped nationally, all lost and forgotten. We have the opportunity to bring back historical clues of our past and present interactions into our future. Rattlesnake Canyon, Schofield Park, Parma Park, Gould Park, and others within the city's front country inventory offer exceptional recreational opportunities for our community. It is in part what defines us as a community. Certainly, the city and community can come together cooperatively to finalize the receiving of this recreational and well-being gem of our front country. It is a travesty to see this opportunity go to the United States Forest Service. They cannot and will not commit to protect and manage this resource appropriately. The springs transferring into the United States Forest Service hands, while they tepidly determine to manage the springs or not, is the match to the next Teahouse fire. I know that the city has its own budgetary shortfalls and concerns, so too, the United States Forest Service has not the resources nor the inclination to properly steward what should be Santa Barbara's crown jewel of open space recreation and well-being by hiking the trails and soaking in these wonderful springs appreciated for thousands of years.
You need to wind up, please.
It is not too late to save this gem for our community. Please contact Land Trust for Santa Barbara County and become a part of the discussions to successful outcome of this wonderful opportunity for the community. The city and community can come together and partner to bring forth what we all will be very proud of and come to love. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth Locke, and then the final speaker will be Michael Sikich.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I think I might have had this sign up before. I have it up now, and it's kind of interesting. A lot of people are looking at it kind of strange and looking at me like I'm weird. But idiots like art because it's stupid. And I actually had a kid come up to me and say, you know, why is art stupid? How is art stupid? I said, well, could you name me an intelligent artist? He was like Da Vinci. He was like Mona Lisa. I said, well, how does that make him intelligent? He was like thought. He said, oh, he had to mix the colors. I told him, well, that's craft. I said, could you give me somebody like current that you would equate to being intelligent? And I'm sorry to say that, you know, I think he's going to Santa Barbara High or the junior high, and I don't think that education he's going to be receiving there in high school is actually going to explain to him where art is today in relation to somebody being intelligent and representing somebody who is passing along intelligence for the kids so that they can become intelligent. And this is where I come in. I'm claiming to be the last of the avant-garde painters of the abstract art movement, you know, everything that I've explained to you guys for the past so many years now. But the, and the idea that I have a sign that says idiots are completely stupid. Now, it's not the idea that the, when it comes to art, the reason why artists lacks intelligence because of the relationship it has with capitalism. And it turns out that idiots will like capitalism because it's stupid. It's kind of like, you know, the other one I have here, it says, stupid is what idiots do. And that's kind of like what we're doing. We're living this age right now that doesn't have any bearing on kind of becoming intelligent because there's nothing that's actually here that is actually based on intelligence. Thank you.
Michael, is it Sikich? You have to help me with your pronunciation of your last name. You'll be the final speaker.
Hello, my name is Michael Sikich, and I'm the president of the Los Padres 4-H Club, and representing 4-H as part of the UC Cooperative Extension. We have a few of our members here today in the back row. We were very lucky to have Ms. Mario join us at our last club meeting, speaking to us about her responsibilities as a council member, and we enjoyed that very much. In our club, we focus on citizenship and community service and how we can serve our community. So I'd just like to raise awareness for our 4-H club here in Santa Barbara. There are 16 clubs countywide, and we would definitely like to have more members in our club. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. We'll move on to the consent calendar, and you have some items that you need to read, I think, or maybe not this time around. No. Okay. Anyone need to take anything off the consent calendar, or is there a motion to approve? Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just going to ask, I have a couple of questions on the Cabrillo Bridge.
Okay, which, number three? And then, Ms. Mario, did you want to?
I need to recuse myself from voting on the minutes of November 15 because I wasn't on the City Council at that time.
Okay, why don't we do that first? If we could have a motion for the November 15, 2011 minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And one abstention?
Abstention.
Okay, and can we have a motion for the rest of item number one? Oh, no, wait, we could do, we could maybe do that all together. So, if you could read item number three.
Item number three, increase in appraisal services for the Cabrillo Bridge project.
Okay, Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support the staff proposal there, but there are two questions that I've had about, and I apologize to staff, I got distracted with a family illness over the weekend, and it's still, prevented me from getting the questions to you earlier, so I apologize for that. The two, I'm going to, the, one question is on the condemnation proceedings, which in the staff report said would take long, or take a long time and be expensive, as I recall, or to go that route. And I didn't know, my recollection is this project's been going on for six, seven years, something like that. Is that roughly the ballpark?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, that is correct.
Yeah. And I just, my worry, I am, this is such an important project for the city, and my main concern is that it stay on track. I know it's fully designed already, and my worry is that it's, we're not going to get to the goal on this under the current negotiations. So I'd appreciate hearing about that and where staff sees it at this point.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, we're very close to getting to a point where we can wrap up the negotiations. There are some steps we need to take. One of the key steps is getting an approved appraisal from Caltrans, and we believe that we are now in the position to do that. And then, once that's done, working in coordination with the city attorney's office, we believe that we have an agreement in principle, and maybe Steve can help me on the correct words there, that we hope to be able to get to a settlement agreement in the near future.
The goal would be to be able to start this project, as I recall, in the fall, something like that?
We have, that has been our description of the project in the past. We now have gone through a peer review or a value engineering process, and we now believe that we can start, if we can get this settlement agreement completed in the very near future, a year from now, in May.
And then, secondly, we saw that something came in front of the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago to change the design of the bridge. Is that, is that correct? And bear with me if this sounds a little convoluted here, but.
It's not, yes, to add a feature separate and parallel to the Cabrillo Bridge project. The idea being is that we have a designed and approved project that has, that includes a temporary beachway bridge, because if you may recall, as part of the past descriptions to council of the project, is that the project would be designed, would be constructed in two phases, where we'd deconstruct half the bridge, leave the other half, so we can maintain one lane in each direction. And then, once one half is done, we go to the next. Okay. That narrows the pedestrian travel, so to accommodate that, we are during construction, constructing a temporary beachway. The idea being, that was presented to the Planning Commission, that is an interdepartmental effort between Public Works, Waterfront, and Creeks, to look at trying to optimize multiple interests of waterfront of, hey, maybe we could put a slurry pipe on this temporary bridge. Creeks is looking at ideas that they're interested in, and Public Works Transportation is interested in looking at a better way of circulation in the area. So the idea being is that let's look at converting that temporary bridge into a permanent bridge. Now, I call that a separate and parallel effort.
Okay.
Because our replacement bridge has all the permits.
Right.
We don't want to risk.
And we're not, and no change of design is, my worry had been, when I looked at that one, are we going to change the design of that bridge? And if we're not going to be able, we're not going to delay the main bridge with that effort. That's the thrust of my question.
That is absolutely correct. So what we've done is that we have, we are, we will have a set of plans and specs for the bridge replacement that can accommodate the permitting of this idea. So that if this idea vets through all the discretionary city review boards, meets all the environmental review that would have to go through the city process, and this is in primary coastal, California Coastal Commission jurisdiction, and meets all those requirements, then the bridge projects is structured such that we can accommodate that, so that we have two, a separate and parallel effort.
Okay, and it won't delay the primary.
And it will not delay, it will not delay the project. If there's a risk of delay, there's been a significant discussion of pulling the plug.
Great. Thank you very much.
If appropriate.
Appreciate that triage approach. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sure. I'll entertain a motion for the rest of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes. On to item number 10.
Item number 10, redevelopment agency successor agency oversight board appointments. Recommendation that council adopt, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara acting as successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the City of Santa Barbara, confirming the mayor's appointment of the members of the successor agencies oversight board pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 34179.
Thank you, Mr. Bossi.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. We are here today in our next step implementing AB 1X26. And just as way of background, last June, well, June 29 of 2011, the state passed its budget, and as part of that budget, there were two bills directly related to redevelopment. The first was AB 1X26, known as the dissolution bill, which effectively would dissolve redevelopment agencies, over 420 redevelopment agencies. And the accompanying bill was AB 1X27, which allowed redevelopment agencies to continue living, if you will, if they were to pay the state a significant amount of money on an annual basis. Now, this, these two bills were challenged and wound up at the State Supreme Court, and on December 29, the State Supreme Court ruled that AB 1X27, essentially the pay-to-play bill, was unconstitutional and upheld AB 1X26, the dissolution bill. So at that, as of February 1 of this year, over 420 redevelopment agencies were dissolved. Since that time, we have been working diligently, and this is a top-to-bottom effort, to try and implement AB 1X26. It's a very confusing and conflicting law, but we're doing our best. And to that end, we were before you on January 10, when the City of Santa Barbara confirmed its appointment as the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency, essentially taking on a good deal of those responsibilities of the former redevelopment agency. On January 31, we were back again before you, where the redevelopment agency board, with its final formal action as a redevelopment agency board, adopted an enforceable obligation payment schedule, and that essentially outlines the obligations that we feel that we need to be paid for, capital projects and things like that. On February 28, city staff developed and sent what is known as the initial draft recognized obligation payment schedule to the county auditor, the state comptroller's office, and the state department of finance, prior to the March 1 deadline. And finally, we are here with the next step in implementing AB 1X26. And that is the established, AB 1X26, excuse me, requires the establishment of an oversight board. And this oversight board essentially oversees all the actions of the successor agency. It has a fiduciary responsibility. It monitors every dollar that is spent, and this group is, again, intended to supervise the activities of the successor agency, and it is comprised of seven members. And these members include one member who is appointed by the county board of supervisors, one member who is appointed by the mayor of the city, one member appointed by the largest special district, and that, in this case, ends up being the Santa Barbara County Flood Control and Water Conservation District, one member appointed by the Santa Barbara County Superintendent of Schools, one member appointed by the chancellor of the California Community College, someone representing the local community college district, one member of the public appointed by the county board of supervisors, and then one, finally, back to the city, one member representing the, an appointment by the mayor representing the former employees of the redevelopment agency. So there's your seven. The mayor's appointment to serve on the oversight board is Jim Armstrong, and he would, that's the direct appointment by the mayor. The mayor has also appointed Mr. Paul Casey, the assistant city administrator and former redevelopment agency deputy director, to serve as the representative of the former employees of the redevelopment agency. Now, if confirmed, and that's what we're recommending today, Mr. Armstrong and Mr. Casey would join the following. They would join, the county board of supervisors has appointed county CEO Chandra Waller as their appointment. They have also appointed assistant county CEO Renee Ball as the appointment from the Santa Barbara County Flood District. The chancellor of the California Community Colleges has appointed Mr. Brian Fonstock. Santa Barbara County Superintendent of Schools has appointed assistant superintendent of the Santa Barbara Unified School District Meg Jeté. And if you're doing the math, that is only six. The final appointment, number seven, is the county board of supervisors' public appointment, and that will be taken care of next Tuesday, April 3. I should let you know also that the first meeting of the oversight board is scheduled for April 12, from 2 to 4, at the Chase Palm Park Center located at 236 East Cabrillo Boulevard. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm glad you're the one that explains what happens because it's very complicated, and yet you're able to describe it. Are the oversight committee board subject to the Brown Act? Do they have to notice, and are there minutes? I mean, and who over, who's the clerk?
Madam Mayor, that's a great question, and one of the many ones we've been looking into. Let's see, it is, the oversight board is subject to the Brown Act. There will be notices, will do the appropriate noticing, and minutes will be taken, and former redevelopment agency staff is responsible for that duty.
So it's the successor agency's responsibility to do the noticing and put the meetings together to watch people take the RDA money to go somewhere else, pretty much?
That is correct.
And you're playing a role in terms of explaining where the funding is or is not in terms of what's been allocated under contracts and what has not been, or whatever our, what our position is on certain projects. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. Just for my colleagues, Mr. Armstrong, Mr. Casey, and I did talk about this ahead of time. I don't have anything against them personally. It's going to be a tough job for them, but I think, you know, I think they're the best qualified individuals who know the nuances behind everything related to redevelopment agencies and the budget and the projects and where they were in the process of getting accomplished. So I think they'll serve us well. There'll be two of seven members who are in a different position, I think, than the other five, but you never know. So that, you know, so we did have that conversation. And as I understand it, the department, the state department of finance or the state comptroller has absolute veto power over any decision of the oversight committee. Is that correct, too?
Madam Mayor, it's a very layered process, but in the end, yes, the oversight board will make their approvals of our recognized obligation payment schedule. That schedule is then sent to a number of places, including the state comptroller, the department of finance, as well as the county auditor, where the state comptroller will have the final say of what is in and what is out.
Thank you. Mr. Hodgkiss?
Could you review, once again, the timeline we expect on this, the timeline of, is it good, when we're going to really hear finally, probably?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hodgkiss, I assume you mean when we're going to know what we have and what we don't have? That, again, is a great question. On April 12 will be the first meeting of this oversight board. I anticipate, we're putting together the agenda now, I anticipate that at that meeting, it's a two-hour meeting, will be a lot of figuring out exactly, or I should say, letting the members of the oversight board, educating them on exactly what the process is. Again, it's a very convoluted law, so we're going to do our best to do that. We're hoping they come in, and I think they will with a good deal of knowledge on that. So it'll be a lot of basic information, electing a chair, selecting the next meeting time, things of that nature. They cannot, the way I understand law, approve or go through the recognized obligation payment schedule until it has been audited, which is something that the county and a third-party auditor is currently in the process of doing. So an auditor, a third-party auditor has to go through this recognized obligation payment schedule and essentially certify it before it can then go to the oversight board to get approved. So we'll meet April 12. We'll figure out the next meeting or few meetings after that, and I would anticipate probably within a month after that, we'll have a pretty solid idea of what projects we have and what money we have and what we don't.
And do we have a deadline when we're required to present it to the state?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hodgkiss, a lot of the timelines have been thrown off due to the fact this was supposed to be, I mean, the law took effect on June 29 of 2011, but due to the lawsuit, everything was bumped out. So a lot of the dates have been shuffled around. There are dates in this where we were actually going forward and having the oversight board meet, but they're not technically, per the law, required to meet until May 15. But then, the state is requiring information from us about our recognized obligation payment schedule by April 15. So it's a, there's a whole mess to unwind, but we're doing our best to, we are complying with the law, and it takes a whole lot of effort, communication with other redevelopment agencies.
So the state hasn't said, you guys got to make a decision by June 15 or something, and then give it to us?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hodgkiss, they would like our approved recognized obligation payment schedule by April 15. However, the law states that.
Doesn't sound like that's going to happen.
It's not the date, but we're, you know, that's why we're setting this meeting up for the 12. We want to continue to push this and get resolution as quickly as possible.
Good luck, Mr. Armstrong.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Bossi, so I take it AB 26 laid out the rules for having the state comptroller being the, having the ultimate veto power. And at that state, is there, have they anticipated any mechanism for redress, or is that just, is it final, or in that the dispensation of those funds are then at his pleasure? Is that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, what, essentially, is the Supreme Court ruling is final. And so, as you stated, AB 26 outlines how this process goes and who has the ultimate authority. My understanding is that once the state comptroller's office opines and says, or approves or does not approve of your recognized obligation schedule, that that is the final say in the matter. And maybe Mr. Wiley can address that from a legal standpoint, but that's my understanding of the law this time.
Well, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, there's always the possibility of litigation that the AB 1X26 does say that the state comptroller's office makes the final determination. And again, this is about whether something's an enforceable obligation. In other words, whether something's a binding contract or not, and was binding at the time this law took effect. And so whether it's Santa Barbara or some other redevelopment agency, or maybe several agencies, there's likely to be litigation over this question of whether something's a binding contract and when it was a binding contract. And if it is a binding contract, what exactly that means? Can you complete a project having spent, you know, 50% of the estimated cost of a project in getting it built, for example? So while the law may say that the state comptroller's office makes the final call, there's always the possibility that someone's going to go to Superior Court and the Court of Appeal over those questions.
And have they given you parameters what defines the binding contract, or is it just typically?
That's just a matter of contract law, you know?
Thank you.
I don't see any speaker slips on this item, so we do need a motion.
Move stack for recommendation?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Good luck. April 12 should be interesting. Item number 11.
Item number 11, proposal to formally establish the Santa Barbara Youth Council as a city advisory committee. Recommendation that council formally establish the Santa Barbara Youth Council as a city advisory committee through the adoption of, by reading of title only, a resolution Advisory Committee through the adoption of, by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara establishing the Santa Barbara Youth Council.
Thank you, something much more pleasant, Ms. Young.
Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, thank you, good afternoon. The reason why we're here today is to present a proposal to formally establish the Santa Barbara Youth Council as a City Advisory Committee. Just as a background on youth boards in general, throughout the several last years, youth boards or youth commissions or youth councils, as they're sometimes called, have been increasing. In fact, the neighbor, the National League of Cities list over 140 local youth councils or youth boards throughout the nation. And that's because cities and states and adult advisors have found that they're an effective way to involve youth in policymaking, to improve services, of course, to have youth input on issues that affect youth, and also to develop youth leaders. And so the City of Santa Barbara has done the same thing in that we have used youth as leaders and use also youth to give information to the city and then in this, in points such as being advisor. And in 1991, the city established a youth task force, and out of that youth task force, which was established for various reasons because of youth issues, was the idea that there need to be a mechanism for youth to have a voice. And so the City Council created the United Youth Empowered, which was a group of youth who were empowered to be able to be involved in city issues, or to establish a youth magazine, in other words, to find a youth voice. And for some reason, from 1997 on, the United Youth Empowered began to be known as the Santa Barbara Youth Council. And the Youth Council for the past 17 years has been involved in advising the City Council, the Parks and Recreation Commission, Parks and Rec staff, as well as other boards and commission. They've been involved in things such as youth speak-outs on issues that involve youth, such as bullying or graffiti writing and different things. They also were very involved in the establishment of the social host ordinance, as well as being involved in the creation of Skaters Point and the 1235 Teen Center. At issue today is the fact that even though they've been doing these things, a review of city documents showed that they were never formally established or adopted by city resolution. And so therefore, stakeholders group was formed to talk about the purpose of the Youth Council, the organization of the Youth Council, its duties and its formats and its term. And so out of that, the stakeholders have the resolution that is before you today. In this resolution, the essential functions and duties of the Youth Council are not changing much from what they are, currently are, but some key themes are: membership. Currently, the Youth Council has 17 appointed voting members. It is proposed that that number be changed to 15. Also currently, other than representation by public schools and private school, there's no identification to what these 15 members should be. So it's recommended that the composition include not only representation from the public schools as well as private, but also alternate schools such as continuation schools or independent schools, as well as to have some at-large members. The application process. Currently, the application process to be on the Youth Council is that an application is submitted, it is reviewed by staff and the current members on the Youth Council, then the executive committee of the Youth Council interviews those members, and then they make the appointment. It is proposed that now the appointment would go through the regular City Council Advisory Committee recruitment with recommendations coming from the City and Youth Council members. Also, a key change would be meetings. Currently, the Youth Councils hold their meetings twice a month, so it's recommended that they would have no less than one regular meeting, but also a second meeting if they deem necessary. And then the term of offices. Currently, if a Youth Council member is appointed, generally, they stay on the Youth Council until they resign or till they graduate in the 12th grade. We're recommending that it be a two-year term with the possibility of being reappointed. During the stakeholders meeting, they didn't really discuss the transition from the way it is now and into the new way, so we've put before you two options. One option would be that the Youth Council, as it currently is, be dissolved effective June 30th, 2012, and that the application process go as, as the resolution states. A second option would be to, upon graduation of the seniors this June, that they would no longer be on the Youth Council, and the remaining eligible members would continue to have their term extended to June 30th, 2013, and at that time, we would go through the City Council Advisory option. The Parks and Rec Commission and the Youth Council both approved the sending of this resolution to the City Council in their meetings in October. And on the March 19th meeting, the Youth Council voted to recommend to City Council that they go with option two. And that's the end of staff report, unless there's some questions.
Thank you, any questions? Mr. Hotchkiss?
Did you say the staff recommendation is option two?
Well, the staff is recommending either option, sir, option one or two. We, we're okay with option two as well as option one.
The Youth Council is recommending?
Recommending option two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we do have some public comment. We have Isha Kelkar, who would be followed by Yvette Gill. Isha, come on up. Good afternoon. If you want to put that mic down there so we can, there you go.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Members of the City Council, City Council Members. My name is Isha Kelkar, and I'm a freshman at Dos Pueblos High School. This is my first year on Youth Council, and I'm very thankful for this opportunity. It's taught me a lot, and I've had a really great time, and I'm really excited for the resolution. It's a very big step forward, and I look forward to hearing the outcome.
Great, thank you, and thank you for your service so far. Yvette?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Members of the Council. As you know, my name is Yvette Gill. I am this year's Chair of the Santa Barbara Youth Council, and on behalf of the Council, we'd like to thank you for all your support that you have given us in the past. We truly appreciate all that you have done. And although not all members were able to join us today due to spring break, we do have members, and we'd like to say that we thank you for your consideration. We hope that you will continue to support us in approving this resolution to formally establish us as a council and continue our work that we do with youth here in the community. I was actually able to sit on the committee that was serving this resolution, although I was only an alternate member. I was able to see all the hard work that the stakeholders put in, and they truly did a great job. This year, the Youth Council does indeed approve the resolution. However, we do support, at our last meeting, we decided that we support option number two in regards to the transition to the new appointments. We would like to support option number two in order to maintain our continuity in the group that has worked so well together this year. We realize the challenge of the transition to the next year's Youth Council. However, we would like to continue our term and stay together as a council, as mentioned in option number two, and of the remaining members, the at-large that would remain, we would heavily recruit to fill any gaps that may exist. In the future years, we believe that there will be a smoother transition. However, this year, the way things worked out were just a little challenging. But we thank you for, for your consideration, and we really hope that you will help formally establish us as a Youth Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gill. Do you know how many seniors are currently on the Youth Council, so how many vacancies we'll be looking at next round?
You mean this year, graduating this June?
Right, graduating.
Five.
Five, okay. So that would be quite a few number of new folks coming on anyway, so, great, thank you very much, and thank you for your leadership. I think we have some questions for you, though. Stay back up, Ms. Maria and then Mr. Rouse.
Oh, I was ready to make a motion.
Okay, did you have a question?
I don't, yeah, I don't.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you. Ms. Gill, are you in any relation to Pepe Gill?
Yes, he is my brother.
Okay, so leadership runs deep in your family. Thank you.
That's right, thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Maria.
Well, Madam Mayor, it's such a pleasure to be a liaison to this esteemed advisory group, and I know that the Youth Council members and city staff have worked really hard to fashion a transition that honors their service and allows the current members to maintain the seats that they've earned. And, and they work so hard, and, you know, they make the City of Santa Barbara look good. And I salute them for being leaders, and I'd like to move that we approve option two and, and formally establish this group as, as part of our city government. What an honor.
Second to motion.
Great, Mr. House?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to jump on here and say thank you to the young people who are here today representing, not just yourselves, but all those that came before you as well. I mean, this has been a great group and just incredibly productive, and Susan, thank you very much for your leadership and your work with them. Great guidance, great role modeling as well, I think everybody would agree. And I think the future's really bright. This formalization has been a long time coming. I really like it that we got alternatives to consider, you know, here, that you would really look at it from different perspectives and make a presentation like that, but this is just really exciting. It is, I think that being, when we talk about being inclusive in governance, the fact that we would be including young people, seriously including them in different roles in, in our city, really says a lot about Santa Barbara, so thank you very, very much.
I just want to say I appreciate in the history of the Youth Council, when you have come to the City Council for recommendations, you don't do that lightly, you do your homework about it, and you really give some very persuasive arguments. The Teen Center in particular, I know was something that staff at the time didn't want to do, but they wanted, they had other ideas, I mean, not that they were against a teen center, but just had other ideas, but you convinced everyone that that was the best use of that property, and I think it's served us and the city very well. So that's due to your leadership. The social host ordinance, the other one, Skaters Point, another one, and now formalizing this. So we look forward to the new ideas coming forth from the Youth Council, so thank you very much for your leadership. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Just a quick word, Madam Mayor, the reason I seconded it is I think it's a good idea, and I think the point Ms. Gill made about continuity is excellent and persuasive to me, so glad to do that, thank you.
Great, okay, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously, thank you very much. Moving on to Councilmember Committee Assignment Reports. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Fire and Police Commission meeting on March 22nd. It was a broad-ranging meeting. The, there's a subcommittee of that commission working on lining up, towing regulations to be in sync with this, with the county. We now have sort of two sets of regulations there, and it's a little confusing for all concerned, and that's getting straightened out. There's also a, apparently a plethora of security guards showing up in the city, that some of which are, have all appropriate documentation and what, some of which don't, so that's a, a new item that's, that's being looked at. Next is a, a new dance permit was issued for Santa Barbara Cantina at 416 State, which also raised the, one of those age-old issues of noise, and Jean and Gail Zanin showed up, and they're, they're not only pistachio farmers in the Cuyama Valley, but they're mixed-use residents of the Gutierrez State Street area, so they, they're all over the map, and they're expressing concern about the quintuple bass sounds that are now hitting way past 60 dB in that area in their view. And so what I understand to be the, the process is that, that from time to time, the, the police department brings the good folks of that neighborhood together to remind them of the rules and regulations and guidelines, and that that's a repetitive process. Mr. Wiley is looking at me as if I'm, okay, don't blame you sometimes. In any case, that, that there's sort of a regular reminder process that goes on there, and that's now back on the, on the docket for another tune-up, as they called it, in the way of the music, loud music. Finally, the Fire Department is under, is upgrading its mapbooks to computerize them, not only for the engines and all the responders, but also for folks that come in from, emergency vehicles that come in from out of town. A, the information can be shared with, with other engines quickly and efficiently, so this is a, a yet another advance in the, in the area of emergency services. And finally, finally, Chief D'Amizio said that even though we're having some light rains, we still need to be preparing for an early and long fire season.
Thank you. Ms. Maria?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along with Councilmember White and yourself, Madam, we attended the TC's, the, the joint meeting of the Transportation Circulation Committee and the Neighborhood Advisory Council on Thursday, and it was a four-hour meeting, and our community is coming forward to ask for pedestrian and traffic safety measures on, on Milpas Street. Another city-related event that I went to, the employees put on a fundraiser every year, it's called the Paul Torres Fundraiser, and it was a lot of fun, and it raises money, it establishes a fund for city employees who have hit hard times, sometimes it's catastrophic illness or other issues, and DJG and the Pepe Marquez and Latin Soul Review Band were excellent to dance to. I'd like to acknowledge Adelante School for their assembly and Maestra Celli for organizing a really nice native song and dance performance, and they also marched for Cesar Chavez, and we all know that holiday is coming up to honor that civil rights and labor leader, and there's going to be a unity march this Saturday, and Casa de la Rosa is also honoring Cesar Chavez and having a 40th anniversary dinner this weekend. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, if you could read item 12?
Item number 12, Conference with Labor Negotiator.
Okay, so we'll move into closed session, and then from there, we will recess until 6 o'clock. Thank you very much.
What happened?
It's okay, Jesus, I fixed the pipe. Mira hijo, when I first got to this country, I was also a janitor.
I'm sorry I lied to you, Papa.
Jesus, you're my son. You can tell me anything. So what if you're not a big fancy lawyer, yet? Hold on, does that mean that London's not your girlfriend?
Yeah, that's what it means.
I'm gonna go change my clothes.
Okay.
Hey, how about my butlering? Did you like my butlering? What happened to your hair? Well, it looked too much like yours, and I didn't want you to be jealous. There you go, keep the change. What is this, what, what am I gonna do with $20? Hey, Jesus, you better hold me back, 'cause I'm about to, I'm about to kill your dad. You don't know me. I'll fight, I'll fight your ass out.
Good evening. Going to call the city council meeting back to order. If you could do the roll call, please.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hodgkiss.
Here.
House.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
White.
Mayor Schneider.
Here. Is there any public comment on items not on the agenda? I don't see anything here, but any public comment for other items? Okay, we'll close the public comment and move on to item number 13.
Item number 13, Community Development and Human Services Committee Funding Recommendations for Fiscal Year 2013 and Housing and Urban Development 2012 Action Plan.
Great, thank you. Ms. Randolph or whoever is taking.
Madam Mayor, thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Okay. We're here before you tonight to present the funding recommendations of the Community Development and Human Services Committee for Fiscal Year 2013. With me is Deirdre Randolph, the Community Development Program Supervisor. I'm Liz Sots, I'm the Community Development Program Specialist. And with me is Greg Orga, he's the Vice Chair of the Committee. He will speak after my presentation. Before I proceed with the committee's recommendations, I'd like to give you a brief introduction to the funding sources and the grant recommendations before you, I'm sorry, the grant recommendation process. If you're interested in learning more in-depth information about the city's funding programs, I provided you with a funding recommendation report. This report is public and can also be found on the city's website. A detailed breakdown of the allocation process, as well as information on the recommended programs, is available on this report. One funding source is the Community Development Block Grant Program. This is the CDBG program. These are federal dollars provided by the Department of Housing and Urban Development and the primary goal is to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities, primarily for those with a low or moderate income. In addition to CDBG funds, council allocates human services funds. These are general fund dollars that go to public service programs that provide direct services to low-income city residents. Ninety-two percent of the agencies recommended for funding tonight in the public services category are funded with city human services funds. In the past few years, the city's CDBG funding allocation from HUD had remained relatively steady, but in recent years, the allocation has decreased significantly. This year's CDBG allocation is 18% less than the current fiscal year and this is on top of a 16% cut from the prior fiscal year. The amount available in CDBG this year is just above $792,000. City human services funds had steadily increased for a few years and then remained level for the last three years. This year, $75,000 in human services funds were reallocated to fund the city's portion of the cost for the proposed homeless collaboration coordinator. The amount available in human services funds this year is more than $628,000. And here is a brief outline of the recommendation process. The application for CDBG and human services funds was made available to the public on October 27th. An announcement was sent via post office and email to all agencies that expressed an interest in applying. This included current recipients and agencies that have applied for funding in the last two years. In addition, advertisements were, appeared in the Daily Sound and the Santa Barbara News Press and a news release was sent to the local media. A link to the online application program was posted on the city website, along with instructions, related documents, and a frequently asked questions section. Staff also held a mandatory application orientation and technical assistance workshop for all applicants on November 4th. In addition, staff reviewed and provided feedback on applications that were submitted prior to the deadline. A total of 72 applications were submitted by the deadline of December 12th, requesting just over 2.3 million, which exceeded the available funding by more than $972,000. In the public services category, 58 applications were submitted with requests totaling 1.3 million. The available funding for this category is just over $747,000, which is a combination of city human service funds and CDBG funds, 15% of which are allowed to be used for public services. As you can see, the majority of public services funding comes from city funds. The committee was able to recommend funding for 53 of the applications submitted. Under the capital projects category, the amount of CDBG funds available this year is just over $581,000. This amount includes reprogrammed CDBG funds from the prior fiscal year. The city received 14 applications with requests totaling $959,282. Again, the requests exceeded the amount available by over $400,000. The committee is recommending funds for 11 capital projects, five of those are city neighborhood improvement task force projects. The remaining CDBG funds will be allocated for fair housing and administration. Per HUD regulations, 20% of CDBG funds can be used for this purpose. Each year, council establishes the funding priorities for the CDBG and human services program. In October, council approved the priorities shown above. Priority one are projects that meet basic human needs and programs that directly relate to city-initiated collaborative efforts, such as the South Coast Task Force on Gangs and the strategies to address community issues related to homelessness. Priority two are programs that are preventative in nature and/or promote the highest degree of functioning the individual is capable of achieving. As always, the committee gave significant consideration to council's funding criteria and priorities. From October through January, the committee visited all the currently funded grantees to see their programs in action. The committee also reviewed the progress the currently funded programs have made during the six months of the year. The committee members were given a few weeks to thoroughly analyze each application and the committee interviewed all applicants in five nights during February. After the interviews took place, the full committee deliberated on the applicants and made their final recommendations on February 28th. Now, I would like to take a moment to recognize the individuals who had the unenviable task of making the recommendations before you tonight. The recommendations the committee makes are not decisions that are made lightly and the committee members take numerous steps to fully evaluate each applicant. As you have heard today, the CDHSC is tasked with a difficult challenge, one they take very seriously. I would like to ask the committee members here today to please stand or raise their hands. It takes a lot of dedication to this community to spend such a considerable amount of time evaluating all these valuable proposals. With the number of funding requests they review each year and the diminishing resources available to many of these agencies, including CDBG and city human services funds, the committee's task has become more and more difficult. We currently have two vacancies on the committee. In the near future, we will be recruiting for a human services representative and a housing interest representative. If council or the public know of anyone who may be interested in these positions, please encourage them to apply. They can call me or Deirdre if they have any questions regarding the time commitment and the duties. Before I conclude this portion of the presentation, I'd like to quickly go over all of the recommendations before you today. We ask council to approve the CDHSC's funding recommendations as presented on Attachment 1 and the Funding Recommendation Report, authorize the Community Development Director to negotiate and execute agreements implementing the funding recommendations, and authorize the seated administrator to sign all the necessary documents to submit the city's 2012 action plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. This document is our application to HUD for CDBG funds. And this concludes my portion of the presentation and I will pass it over to Greg.
I'm sorry, is your microphone on? I think they're checking. Is the green light on?
You want to start over?
There we go. No, we got it.
Okay. I am here this evening to present to you the funding recommendations of the Community Development and Human Services Committee for the Fiscal Year 2012, 2013. As you saw from staff's presentation, these recommendations represent the best efforts of this committee after a thorough review of 72 different applications for funding. The interviews took place on five nights during three weeks in February, comprising more than 30 hours of meetings and at least another 20 hours of each committee member's time to read and analyze each application. Based on site visit reports, the presentations, the details of the applications, and mindful of the priorities set by the city council, each member gave each application serious thought and consideration as we individually scored each program considered for funding. We reconvened again to discuss our thoughts and submitted our individual scoring. Staff then compiled the information and produced the average results for a funding subcommittee, which further scrutinized the findings and made a recommendation to the entire committee, which was approved on Tuesday, February 28th. This year, the committee received 58 applications in the public human service category and as you heard, the funds requested far exceeded what was available. This shortfall has increased in recent years. This not only makes the committee's job more challenging, but it also means that programs must meet ever higher standards of performance and accountability. Although all these programs are worthy of support, the application process has become increasingly competitive. The committee, as we do every year, took great care to ensure that our recommendations for funding will result in the most efficient use of city funds. This year, the committee is recommending funding for 53 of the 58 requests received in this category. The committee had to prioritize the need for city funding and we relied heavily on the funding priorities approved by council. We chose to recommend funding for three new human services programs, which we collectively deemed worthy of your consideration because of the need and diversity of their programs. We also are also recommending small increases for 11 programs that demonstrated extraordinary need and/or expansion of their services, had a high rating, and presented a good case for the additional funds. The programs recommended for funding serve numerous facets of our community: children, seniors, at-risk youth, persons with mental or physical disabilities, and the homeless. These programs are also help to meet the basic human needs of those less fortunate and help prevent hunger, delinquency, gang violence, and homelessness. On the capital side, we have recommended funding for 11 of the 14 applications. Five of these are city-sponsored projects under the City Target Area Neighborhood Improvement Program. These projects are located in the city's six census tracts where a high concentration of low and moderate income residents live. The projects include access ramps, improvements at the Westside Community Center, bus shelters, and the Cabrio Ball Field. We are very supportive of this program to improve areas of the Lower East Side and Lower West Side neighborhoods of our community. We are also recommending funding, capital requests from six nonprofit organizations. They are the Jewish Federation to rehabilitate its community center bathrooms, Girls Inc. of Santa Barbara to replace the windows, Santa Barbara Neighborhood Clinics to rehabilitate the East Side Family Dental Clinic, Legal Aid Foundation to improve staff security, St. Vincent's to install a bathroom in their toddler classroom, and Women's Economic Ventures to continue providing micro enterprise development for local small businesses. These recommendations are not made lightly, but with great thought and discussion. All of the committee members fully understand that these funds assist in providing an invaluable safety net that serves the very lowest to moderate income segment of the city's population. I invite each of you to make it a point to visit some of the agencies which you are not familiar with during the coming year. I believe that you will be humbled by the great work that is being done with the assistance of these city funds, which we all understand are discretionary. On behalf of the committee and all of the agencies, we ask for your continued support of funding to help in serving the lowest-income residents in areas of our community. We thank each and every agency and their staff and applaud their efforts and contributions for the incredible services they provide on behalf of the Santa Barbara community. Thank you and we are available for questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council at this point? Yes, we have lots of public comment, so. Okay, so I will turn it over to public comment. And you have two minutes up here at the podium and I call your name and if you're next up, if you could be close to it, just to keep things moving smoothly, we'll start with Rebecca Robertson and then continue with Gail Golden. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Rebecca Robertson. I'm the chief program officer at St. Vincent's and I am here to just recommend to you that you support the recommendations that you've heard about and I wanted to thank the staff and the committee that again, after so many years, I know has done such a great job and amazing job and I know that their job is harder and harder every single year. On behalf of St. Vincent's, all the families that we serve, I would like to thank you for the recommendation, for our family strengthening program, serving single mothers and their children, and also for our Early Childhood Education Center, which is licensed for 46 infants, toddlers, and preschoolers. These are all low-income families and it's going to be, it would be a great benefit to this program if you could continue that recommendation. Again, thank you for all your work.
Gail Golden will be followed by Marcia Bailey.
My name is Gail Golden and I'm here representing the Center for Successful Aging and I also would like to thank the committee and the council for the support that you've given us for the seniors of Santa Barbara. We've had some wonderful new programs. We are currently putting out the only newspaper for, by, and about seniors in our community. We have a new pet therapy program and we have a call reassurance program for homebound seniors in addition to our peer counseling program. So, thank you so much again for your support.
Marcia Bailey will be followed by Randy Friedman, Ian Holland, and Paul Lewis.
Good evening. I too want to thank the committee and the staff for the recommendation for funding and to the city council for your ongoing funding. In 1995, you gave us $75,000 in CDBG funds to start our microloan fund. Since that time, because of the revolving nature of the fund and the ability to leverage that with private funds, we've made over $2 million in local loans to small business people who couldn't get bank startup loans. The kinds of businesses that we lend and provide training to are the businesses that you see when you walk down the main streets of Santa Barbara. There are businesses like Artemis Animal Clinic, Ethnic Breds, Happy Little Hippo, Say Cheese, Fresco, Maverick Window and Door, Chocolat du Calibreson, The Closet, Hampton Village, East Beach Wine, Murphy Electric, Demo to Design. There are hundreds and hundreds of businesses that you don't see when you walk down the street because they're operating out of their homes or in an office building. There are accountants and bookkeepers and designers, writers, jewelers, trainers. Over the 20 years that we've been in business, we anticipate that we Over the 20 years that we've been in business, we anticipate that, or we estimate that we've helped over 2,500 small businesses get started. So, I think I don't need to tell you how important those very small businesses are to our community. They create jobs, and they really make our community unique. No offense meant to the gap, but most people would much rather walk into a unique, locally-owned small business than a chain that you can find anywhere in the world. So, thank you so much for your support. I really appreciate it.
The AHA Group, there they are, followed by Senorina Castello.
Good evening. I'm Randy Friedman, co-director of the Academy of Healing Arts for Teens.
And I'm Ian Holland, one of the court facilitators for AHA.
And I'm Paul Lewis, a facilitator for AHA.
And I want to thank, first of all, the committee that works way, 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 way many, many hours to put this together, and to the city council for all the support that you have given us. And just to say that AHA, this year, will be serving about 1,500 teens in the high schools, after school, and in the summer, teaching social and emotional learning. We have a very effective program to stop bullying, have kids know what to do when they see bullying, and to really create kids who are allies for one another. And Paul has been in our program as a teen, and he's now a facilitator, so I'd like him to step forward.
I was a part of the program for six years as a teen. It really helped me to steer clear from gangs and violence and drugs because it was very present in my family at the time, and it really helped me get away from that, helped me develop character, self-esteem, and confidence in myself, and it helped me identify myself as who I am because I had a hard time figuring out who I was culturally and personally. And as now, I'm a facilitator for AHA, and I love working for the teens, and I'm also in the background process with the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Senorina Castello will be followed by Vanessa Gonzalez and Brianna Case.
I'm Virginia Benson. I'm the director of education for Planned Parenthood, and I wanted to thank the committee and thank you so much for supporting us over the years, for having us reach thousands of teens and giving them comprehensive sexuality education that some are not provided in their schools. And I'm going to turn it over to Senor.
And my name is Senorina Castello, and I work as the Community Health Education Coordinator for all of Santa Barbara. And yeah, it's just, thank you so much for supporting us in our comprehensive sex ed. And now, we're actually collaborating with Boys and Girls Club, and some of the kids are here, and they take the classes. So, yeah, thank you so much for the ongoing support.
Thank you. Vanessa Gonzalez and Brianna Case will be followed by Bernard Hicks.
My name's already on it, so I figured we could just get it all over with.
We can combine you all if you want. That's fine.
Hi, I'm Magda Royal, Director of the Westside Boys and Girls Club, and we want to thank the committee so, so much for all your support and for your guidance in the process. And definitely thank you for always believing in us. Our teen program has really expanded, and I'm going to give them a few seconds because they are really the light that shines at the facility. They've really brought the teen department together. We have over 90 teens that assist daily, and it's really made quite a difference, and without the teen director there, it wouldn't be the same. So, we want to thank you so much for your support, and I'm going to let Vanessa take the stand because that's really who's running a lot of this.
Bring that mic along. There you go.
Well, I want to say thank you for the support you guys have been giving us. It keeps kids out of the streets and stuff, and all these programs that have been helping us are good for us. And I just thank you guys for supporting us because it's just good for you guys to support us because without you guys supporting us, I don't think we would have so many teens coming to the teen room, like to the Boys and Girls Club, or having kids there. I just love going there, just to be myself. I like count on them to be there for me, and they're always there for me. And yeah.
Thank you.
And the teen dances, too. Thank you for supporting that, too, because we have so many teens that go there, and they just come and have fun. We enjoy everything you guys have given us, and thank you.
You're welcome. Bernard Hicks will be followed by Brandon Lara.
Once again, we want to just thank, I'm the athletic director as well as team director at the Westside Boys and Girls Club, and we want to thank you for your support of what we're trying to do at the club. As you said, we have 90 teens that are actively participating in our programs, and without your support, it wouldn't be as well-attended and as successful as it is. And we want to just thank you once again. Thank you.
Brandon Lara will be followed by Lori Parker.
I would just like also to thank you guys. Going to the Boys and Girls Club has kept me more concentrated in school, and I've learned from the programs different things. And yeah, I just really enjoy it. And I started going there in January, and it's helped me a lot. I look towards going to school and stuff. Yeah, they just, thank you for supporting us. And yeah, that's all I like.
That's great. Lori Parker will be followed by Lauren Katz.
Hi, I'm Lori Parker. I'm the executive director for the Santa Barbara Police Activities League. Madam Mayor, city council members, and the committee, I want to thank you on behalf of our organization. We provide after-school sports at all four junior highs in the city. What that means for the kids is they get free after-school sports. We work with the city of Santa Barbara, the city of Galita, the police department, and Parks and Rec, and now the county ed department, providing free services for these kids, bringing our community together. Our goal is, and what we believe in, is to erase the city's borders and create a seamless community. And by having the kids have free after-school sports, they play each other in competitive sports, and you don't have East Side versus West Side. You have the Condors playing Santa Barbara Junior High, and we feel that it creates a unity. So, we want to thank you for supporting us, and thank you, committee members.
Lauren Katz will be followed by Christine Schwartz.
Madam Mayor, city council, thank you for having me, and thank you to the committee for the recommendation. I am Lauren Katz with the Jewish Federation of Greater Santa Barbara. I'm the president. I have with me here today Barbara Kuhn. She is the director of our Jewish Family Service. And I'd just like to say thank you to the committee for granting us the request for new bathrooms and a new courtyard. Our bathrooms are currently 38 years old, and we have one sink in each male and female bathroom to service over 10,000 people a year. So, we are desperate for the new bathrooms and really appreciate it for the health and safety of our constituents, which range from babies to at-risk youth up to frail and elderly older people. So, I really thank you so much for your recommendation, and thank you.
Christine Schwartz will be followed by Erica Martín del Campo.
Good evening. I'm Christine Schwartz. I'm the executive director of New Beginnings Counseling Center, and I am here representing the RV Safe Parking Program. I'm new to the agency, and I'm brand-new to this process, so forgive me if I make any mistakes. But I just want to say I'm so grateful that this funding exists for all of us, and it just makes running the program so much easier. We provide management and oversight for the RV Safe Parking Program. We manage 112 parking spots and 23 lots throughout Santa Barbara and a few in Galita. And those are for people who are homeless and living in their vehicles. I had the opportunity for the first time to visit with some of our clients last week, and it really, I really understood how important it is for people to have a safe place to park at night and to be able to feel that they can go to the same place and be safe, anyway. So, I appreciate all of your efforts, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Erica, and then Mark Watson.
Mayor Schneider and members of the council. My name is Elsa Granados, and I'm the executive director of Santa Barbara Rape Crisis Center. I want to thank you for letting us come before you, and to thank the committee and the staff of the city of Santa Barbara for their assistance with the grant. We support the recommendation, and I want to share with you that this is my 15th year as executive director of the Rape Crisis Center. And so, in my culture, that's my quinceañera year. So, I'm having a good time. And so, during that time, the entire time that I've been there, you all have supported the Rape Crisis Center, and even before then. And so, I want to come and thank you for your support of the Rape Crisis Center as a body and as individuals, because we have been successful during that time, incrementally successful, even through tough economic times. So, thank you so much for your hand in that success. And this is Erica Martín del Campo, and she's going to share with you some information about Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Hi. Thank you for having us all, and thank you once again for all of the support. I want to continue to ask for your support and participation in the events that we do have. Like Elsa was just saying, we have April that's coming up, which is our Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And for this year, we're actually going to focus on Jeans for Justice campaign, meaning that no matter what you're wearing, no matter how you're dressed, it's never an invitation to be a part of sexual assault or sexual violence. So, we are hoping that we can actually hand these to every council member in showing support. Our bracelets say "End Sexual Assault Now." And if we can ask everyone just to visit our website for a lot of calendar events that we'll be having on and participating, especially in Denim Day, which is April 25 on a Wednesday, by wearing jeans and denim in support of ending sexual assaults.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mark Watson will be followed by Lynn Goble.
Madam Mayor, city council, my name is Mark Watson, representing Channel Island's YMCA. More specifically, Noah's Anchorage Youth Crisis Shelter and My Home at Artisan Court, which was in collaboration with Housing Authority. I wanted to say thank you for your support. It's been a historic one for Noah's Anchorage. It's been a program that's gotten your support since I've been a part and even before, and also for taking on My Home, which was a new program for last year, working with former foster youth, helping them get out of homelessness. And thus far, we're having some great success stories with that program. Just wanted to say thank you for that support. Definitely also wanted to encourage the recommendations, and also echo support to the staff and the committee of CDBG. Thank you.
Lynn Goble, followed by Cecilia Rodriguez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm Lynn Goble. I'm the vice chair of the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force, a program which has been successfully serving the residents of our community for the past 36 years. I'm sure you're well aware, except for perhaps council member Maria, of what the Rental Housing Mediation Task Force does, as we did a couple of our presentations last calendar year, and you graciously supported us. As I hear all these other wonderful programs, my hat is off to the committee for being able to choose and actually give funds to all these various organizations that are so deserving. And I urge your support for the recommended committee funding, which represents a very needed portion of our budget for fiscal year 2013. So, thank you.
Cecilia Rodriguez will be followed by Erin Eckert.
Good evening. I'm Cecilia Rodriguez. I'm the executive director of CALM, Child Abuse Listening Mediation. And I would like to echo the congratulations to the committee that worked so diligently to put forth the recommendations, and I urge you to vote for those recommendations. I also want to, this is timely because Child Abuse Prevention Month is next month, and the funding that we get here is for our treatment programs for those children that don't have any other source of funding to get treatment once they've been abused. Child Abuse Prevention Month is all about preventing child abuse, and I hope one day we don't need to come to you for funding for abused children, but can celebrate the fact that in our community, we pledge to not be silent about abuse and have a community of caring around protecting children from child abuse. So, thank you.
Erin Eckert will be followed by Jessica Paredes.
Hello. I'm Erin Eckert. I'm the director of operations at Storyteller Children's Center, and I want to thank you as the council for your past support of our program, as well as the staff and the committee for your support as well. Storyteller provides comprehensive early childhood education for homeless and at-risk children, as well as comprehensive support services for their families. And we have two childcare centers located in the city of Santa Barbara. They're just two blocks from each other, and we serve 100 children each year, and we just truly appreciate your support of our program, and thank you so much.
Jessica Paredes. Elsa, you already spoke, okay? So, then followed by Ellen Goodstein.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jessica Paredes, the Sexual Assault Response Team Coordinator for Santa Barbara County. I'd like to thank the staff and the committee for the recommendation for funding our forensic interviewing program. Funding will provide safe and supportive forensic interviews for children in Santa Barbara City Limits, which will help and support them in gaining access to better healing and becoming less victims and more survivors in our committee. So, thank you for the recommendation.
Ellen Goodstein, followed by Heidi Holley.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Ellen Goodstein, and I'm the executive director of the Legal Aid Foundation of Santa Barbara County. I want to say thank you, job well done, to the committee. I've been in that situation myself, and I know how difficult it is, especially with shrinking dollars and so many wonderful programs doing good in our community. Legal Aid is 53 years old. We started here in Santa Barbara in 1959, and we've been faithfully serving our community, providing free, high-quality legal assistance to victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, the elderly, the homeless, people threatened with homelessness, the disabled, both mentally and physically. Last year, we helped over 5,000 residents of our county. Approximately 50% of those resided in the city of Santa Barbara. So, the work is very important. We are sort of the last safety net to keep poor and vulnerable individuals from falling through the cracks, and so I just want to say thank you to the city council. We've enjoyed years of your support for the good work that we do, and we don't take it lightly. We're very appreciative. And thank you to the committee for their recommendations and their hard work. Thank you.
Heidi Holley will be followed by Bonnie Campbell, and then the final speaker will be Gabriela Rodriguez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. I wanted to thank you on behalf of the Friendship Center for your continued support of our program. In addition, we wanted to thank the staff and committee for all their efforts during this funding process. Their efforts don't go unrecognized as well. It was quite the undertaking and very arduous task. What does Friendship Center do? Friendship Center offers an Adult Day program for aging and dependent adults and respite, much-needed respite for their caregivers. And as I stand before you tonight, I am mindful of a man named Bob. And Bob was a retired city engineer, and he had progressive Alzheimer's disease. He lost his ability to vocalize and to formulate sentences and to be able to communicate. So, our compassionate staff one day gave him a clipboard. Well, he couldn't connect the dots as far as having a conversation with you, but he could connect those dots on the clipboard. So, we were always encouraged by that, to see him do that. Friendship Center has seen budget cuts that serve seniors in California at a time when aging baby boomers join a population of older people living longer than ever before. So, we realize that city monies are discretionary, and we appreciate the fact that you all know the importance of these dollars. It is apparent, though, that during these difficult times, there just doesn't appear to be enough dollars. And who's impacted by that are our childrens, our vulnerable citizens, and our elderly. This begs the question: Why was there a reduction in funding at a time when our most vulnerable citizens of our city need it the most? And it's also unfair that it appears that there were funds that were redistributed at the expense of our most needy citizens, particularly from those agencies who receive current funding. Less funding equates to less services. We do support the recommendation before you. However, ask you to review those funding recommendations for those agencies who are receiving less funding this year than in previous years. We hope that you believe that the public-private partnership is worth sustaining. Thank you.
Bonnie Campbell, and then the final speaker will be Gabriela Rodriguez.
Madam Schneider and city council, I'm Bonnie Campbell with the Santa Barbara Neighborhood Clinics. And to the commission, thank you so much. We know you well, and we love you very much at the Santa Barbara Neighborhood Clinics. And on behalf of the board of directors and our staff, and most importantly, the community that we serve, those under... that we serve, those underserved and uninsured, say that three times fast, and because of your funding historically and what's before you this year, not only will we continue to be able to serve the homeless population with exceedingly fine dental care, the only place they have to go in Santa Barbara, and also to pay some attention to our actual dental clinic facility, which is in great disrepair. So, we are very grateful to once again be before you with our grant requests, and very grateful to the hard work of the commission and the care they took in these decisions, and we hope you will approve them as before you. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Gabriela Rodriguez. First and foremost, I want to thank the committee for your endless hours of hard work. With over $1.3 million in requests, I'm sure it was extremely, extremely difficult to narrow down your choices, but I'm here on behalf of Future Leaders of America, and I just wanted to thank City Council and the hard-working committee for having youth as a priority. As resources keep shrinking, as our families demonstrate a greater need for our services, Future Leaders of America is proud to be able to provide the leadership, educational, and personal development for many of youth who wouldn't have these opportunities otherwise. So, thank you once again, and we look forward to demonstrating our progress as we go along.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comment, and it's to the council. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Madam Mayor, thank you. First off to the committee, thank you for doing all that you did, and an apology, because I was in the liaison, but somehow I got dropped off the circulation list, and it's going to sound terrible. I'm almost glad that I did, because it's so painful to say no to all these people that you ultimately, and that's kind of what you had to do. So, that's not an easy thing to do, and so I'm sure that it was obviously difficult. I did have one or two questions I wanted to ask. I guess I should address you, Mr. Gorga. I wanted to ask on the dental program, is there any requirement that the people, the homeless, for the dental program, are they in a program to help them get off the street, you know?
As far as I know, I don't know of any requirement for them to be in a program to get off the street. I don't, I'm not sure if that is a requirement for them to get dental work done.
Let me explain why I'm asking that, because that's been the intent of mine, and I think others up here, excuse me, for a long time, to help, actually be able to help people, and to not, as it were, enable them. The saddest stories to me are to read somebody's body has been found, and then, you know, you think, oh, gosh, a homeless person, and then you find out they've been here for five years, and that's just astounding. That means that they've lived without services, without us reaching them for five years, and succumbed. So, everything I'm trying to do is to get people plugged into services. So, I don't know if there's a way to do that with the dental program. I don't know if the dental person is still here, but yes, hi. You know what I mean about getting people in a recovery mode? Yeah, absolutely. Can you want to come up just for a second, if you would?
Come on up, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Hotchkiss. The Santa Barbara Neighborhood Clinics collaborate with many agencies, as well as the Housing Authority of Santa Barbara. We are part of the team that went out to assess the risk factors facing the homeless. We partner also with the County Housing Authority, as our Isla Vista Neighborhood Clinic is in that area. And we are looking for ways always for the homeless patients that come to us for their dental care and for their medical care, to hook them up with as many social services that are available to them. And we have very strong referrals with many different agencies, including the Public Health Department, Sansom Clinic for Diagnostic Testing, Legal Aid Foundation for any support that they may need, and strong relationships with ADMSHS, also for those that we serve with behavioral health. So, we have a health-safety net. We're cognizant the only way to end homelessness is to put them in homes, and we are doing our part in the health-safety net to increase their medical and dental health, so they're better able to make those choices for themselves with these other agencies that are in place to help them.
Right, and remember that their homes may not be here, they may be with their families elsewhere, and we're trying to plug people in, because we ultimately won't be able to build housing for everybody, but they have a home in Oregon, they may have a home somewhere.
That's right.
And also, the VA is very helpful in that regard.
That's right, and we do have a strong network, looking at all of those ways to reunite families, put them in housing, and get them services to get them off of the street.
That's great, thank you very much.
Most welcome.
The other one I wanted to ask about was the Community Kitchen, and I know Mike is here, so he might want to talk about this, and we've talked about this before, but at lunchtime, as opposed to morning and evening, but at lunchtime, I think that right now still, the policy is to feed anybody that shows up, which I understand. I don't really agree with it, but I understand it, because how do you turn somebody down that's hungry? But again, if we're not encouraging people to be a part of a program, we're just enabling them, as it were. There's a fellow named Ted Hayes in Los Angeles, who's a homeless expert advocate that says, "Don't do that, because it's like feeding pigeons. It's a terrible image." But it's sort of true. So, and I've asked Mike if we could do this so that we're just feeding people that are in a program, and maybe you can address that, Mike, now. I don't know if you could come up for a second, because I don't really think that's in your purview.
No, no, it's not.
Mr. Foley.
Now, don't get mad at me.
Good evening.
The best response I can give you is that the council just in this year, in 2011, completed a subcommittee effort, and the council voted unanimously seven to nothing that, at this moment, the program at the Community Kitchen is what we should be doing, and we certainly continue to look for other opportunities. I can tell you that every single person who does come to Casas Peranza is encouraged to participate in whatever types of programs and services that they possibly can. The only last thing I would tell you is that we do not have recovery programs for the number of people who need them. So, we are a safety net response, and it's true that many people come who are hungry, and so we do provide services. We're certainly open to looking at different types of alternatives, and we've participated in that in the subcommittee, and we continue to do that.
Okay, thank you. Well, we have heard a great deal from people in the Milpus area that I think are, that where Casas Peranza is unfairly being labeled, because it's not people from, that are in your services, but people that are taking advantage of the noon program, that go out in a neighborhood and kind of create chaos, and you're aware of that. So, in a sense, I think that that program is unfair to you, because it paints your program in a negative light, which it shouldn't be. So, anyway, my encouragement, at least a consideration here, is that that's one thing of the $100,000 that Casas Peranza, I think, has delineated here, that we might take another look at and see if there's a better way to do that, rather than just being, feeding people and putting them back on the street.
Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to take a moment to really express my deep appreciation, I'm sure it's shared by all of us on council here, for the committee and for the work that you've done. I mean, this is a very, very difficult job to do, you know, in an environment where the funds are diminishing and the need is increasing, to be able to really make these kinds of judgments, to really work hard, to look at the proposals, and to be able to come up with really balanced and appropriate decisions that are then, you can hear it today, you can just hear this, the appreciation for the work that you've done. And yes, each of the agencies, each of the groups has not gotten all that they asked for necessarily. Some did, and it's really fortunate, other ones weren't able to get that full amount. But the gratitude that you can hear today and that's being expressed here is sincere, deeply sincere, and I would just want to share in that. For those who are watching, I think maybe one of the best parts of this evening is that they get a chance to hear from you when you come up and speak to us, and there's people in the community who would like to support you and want to participate, and that magnifies the small amount that the city of Santa Barbara has to contribute to this. So, I think this is really an opportunity to appeal to the community at large, to really re-up their commitment to your organizations and to participate as much as they possibly can, either volunteering their time, or their talent, or their treasure, and I think that's really an important part of tonight. I also recognize that we could have what might be an unhealthy kind of competition for funds between organizations, and I want to say that's not the character of Santa Barbara. Santa Barbara really is blessed by having a cooperative and collaborative spirit that goes on between these different organizations, and as Bonnie was just speaking there, I was really reminded on how much the referral network is a really amazing web of mutual support, and that's something that we really want to continue to highlight and appreciate. And then lastly, I, one of the things that I'm, and maybe I'll address this a little bit to the comments that Mr. Hotchkiss is making, while we're really all very interested in seeing the results and the outcomes, the, you know, you want that exit interview to be a really positive one, and have your statistics show your success. Success is measured in a lot of different ways, and sometimes just the kind word and the hand reached out and the willingness to take somebody in who really has no promise of a future, that could be the turning point, and you can hardly ever measure that. And I believe that, you know, feeding people, and in the cases of many of your organizations, just lending an ear, I mean, you know, just, it makes all the difference in the world. So, you know, in the interest of moving our conversation along here tonight, I want to move the items A, B, and C in our recommendation that really support the committee's results of your work. Thank you so much again, and gets us along. Thank you all for your participation, for stepping up to the greater need than you can possibly fulfill, but thank you for going after it anyway.
The motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I actually want to echo a little bit of what Mr. House was saying, because you guys have had to take relatively meager funds and distribute them even in a more meager way, doing what all of us have had to do up here, and certainly all of us in the private sector have been doing the last few years. And it's not easy, it's not easy to say no. It's my hope that some of the efforts that we're talking about eventually will be coordinated, especially in dealing with homeless and distribution of services. And that's one of our goals, something we've been working on collectively up here, so that eventually there will be maybe an ability to gain more strength and more power through the coordination of these services. And that's, I think that's a really worthy goal. And it starts with you guys, and, you know, like everyone up here, you know, really amazed by the amount of work and the amount of time and the amount of compassion you put into this effort tonight. So, that's why I'm supporting your recommendations. Thank you.
I'll just also want to thank the committee and the amount of work that you do, and not just in the interviews, which is pretty intense anyway, and you keep people to the second. It's pretty amazing. I wish I could do that as well with public comment, the way you do with the timing for your applications, and everyone in the room knows what I mean, who's been through it. But also throughout the year, when you do your site visits, and then when you review the applications, to show that they actually were, they were accountable in terms of what they promised to do last year and how they delivered in order to get future funding. And I know you take that very seriously, and we appreciate that, because it's precious general fund money in a lot of sense, that we don't have to put in, and I'm pleased that we have a legacy that of the city that we do, put in general fund money to supplant the CDBG funds or augment them. And just to follow up on some of the comments here, and also to touch on, I think what Ms. Holly was saying, the $75,000 that looked like it was less than the amount, I know that was, that was a concern to the committee, had less money to work with, but I think the intent behind that, that is still going to human services. It's going as a regional collaborative way to look at homelessness in the county, and I think us having the leadership role that we played in setting aside the $75,000 will help other cities and the county put money in they perhaps have never done before in this way, to really look at the issue on a regional basis, so that maybe some of the need won't be as great into the future. And so, it's, that kind of, looking at that bigger picture is there. So, it wasn't like that money is not going to human services. It is, it's just in sort of a little different category than, that's still being worked out. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that, and really, again, thank the committee for what they do, and thank the nonprofit community. I mean, we, as a city, it's not our job, you don't want us to be the ones being the social service people and the mental health and public health and everything else. We need to partner with you to make the city work as great as it does, and we're so fortunate to be in such a compassionate and philanthropic community that really cares about each and every one of us here. So, and the work that you do in each and every day is really quite commendable, so thank you very much. Mr. Francisco, and then Ms. Maria.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually had a question. Is the lady from New Beginnings still here? Could you come up for just a moment? I was wondering if there's, if there's maybe a typo in here. It's on the page that describes your program. That's page 60, for others who are interested. It talks about 2012-13 unduplicated clients, 200, and then it says down under measurable goals, case management for 812 unduplicated homeless people.
I didn't write the application. I get to say that for a little bit longer, so let me start there. It's actually 852 for the last fiscal year. Through the RV, safe parking, and through outreach, because we have people, we have a case manager who works at Willbridge part-time. We go onto the street, we provide food weekly, so we do a lot of different outreach services through, everything combined.
Okay.
Last fiscal year was 852.
The clients might be people who are in the RVs, and then the unduplicated homeless, the 812 might be others who may not be, is that possible?
Yeah, I, I.
I think you're looking at the distinction between the two?
I believe that.
Yes, exactly.
It was combined in the application in a way that didn't necessarily.
We'll have a chat sometime offline.
Yeah, but I do know that, because we did, the figures are accurate, in that we served 852 unduplicated people last year.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Maria.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I worked for the Santa Barbara Independent, we honor local heroes every year, and it was the best luncheon, and I would hear about people doing good works, and tonight, this is reminding me of that time, and you all are our local heroes, doing this awesome work, and I'd like to offer my unconditional support for your programs tonight. And I'd also like very much for city employees to wear jeans on Jeans for Justice Day. Mr. Armstrong, just to let you know, I'll be asking, and he and Mr. Wiley, I think there is a rule, they have to be in their suits every day. But that would be really nice to show our solidarity with the Rape Crisis Center, so I will be putting some forward, some request for that, and I will be voting for these recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the Rape Crisis Center also has denim ribbons that you can wear, so if you have to wear a uniform and can't wear denim, there's still a way to, or jeans, you can still wear denim, so that's still an option. Great. And, okay, please let, Elsa says, please let her know if you need those ribbons, so. Anything else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes.
No abstaining.
You're abstaining from the whole thing?
Yes, just because I want to show my appreciation for what the committee did, but also my objection to the Community Kitchen being included in that.
Okay, you're welcome to do that. Okay, thank you very much, and we're adjourned.